Okay, we are streaming live now. I'm very sorry for that technical delay. I do believe so. Yes.
Okay, call the meeting to order. This is the regular screw board meeting of the Norwalk Seaspoon District. This is Thursday, November 12th, 2020. Roll call, please.
Mr. Linder? Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Ritzenthaler?
Here.
Ms. Snellinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Wick?
Well, please stand for the flag of allegiance.
Flag of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of America.
This time they need a motion to adopt the agenda that we have. Thank you, Mrs. Wick. You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Linder.
Yeah.
Any additions, corrections, or anything? Nope. Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Wick?
Good call. Hang on.
Mr. Linder?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Ritzenthaler?
Yes.
Mrs. Snellinger?
Yes.
Okay, educational spotlight number two on the agenda. Adam.
Educational spotlight tonight for League Elementary. Actually, if you guys would, I'd like to start tonight. We had a member of our family at League, a member of our Norwalk family, Gary Peterson, just retired recently. Couple of weeks ago passed away and meant a lot to a lot of people at Norwalk and certainly a lot to our League family. So if you guys would mind, just a quick moment of silence for Gary. Thank you. Okay, so due to the nature of this school year, K through six, we were supposed to start Leader and Me this year, which we were all really excited about. We kind of put that aside for a bit because of all the other stuff going on. And we were, again, really excited to jump into that. So we are trying to still do some things this year that lead towards that or get a jumpstart to that. Robin has certainly been a big, big part of that. Mrs. Rogers here. I can just say a couple of things about Robin, too. I'm sure you guys know that have been around Robin and she's been around for quite some time. Among her many attributes that I admire, two things that are huge for us at League. One, she's very capable of pretty much anything. And two, she's willing, and that's the biggest thing. She goes above and beyond for kids, and what she's going to show you tonight is probably going to show that to you guys. So she kind of came up with this brainstorm together, Robin and I, and she's really taken the bull by the horns and run with it. And it is really, really neat. We call it Positive Point. And it just, with the nature of last school year and the shutdown and everything, and the worry of possibly that happening again this year, you know, it really affected kids, I think, just not being around each other and not having that sense of community and all of that, that stuff. So we wanted to make sure that no matter what, no matter what this school year looked like, hopefully in person the whole year, if it were to ever to go hybrid or ever online, there was that place that students could go and still have that sense of community and belonging to League. So, Mrs. Rogers.
So, as Adam said, we wanted to make sure that all of our students could stay connected, whether they were at home or in person. And obviously, we, as all the other schools, we have students learning remotely, who I'm getting to know better now. So it's just, it's a website called Positive Point, and they can link to it from our home, from the school website, and they just go to League and click on Positive Point. And hopefully, we'll see it up here on the screen. I'm just kind of going to walk you through the website, so you can see what it has to offer. So the main page starts out by talking about that, you know, the website, and not just the website, but our school, is a positive place for kids to be. And the website is all positive things. So we do have a shout out page, and that's one of the things that I'll show, and students can turn it in, a little message. It all comes through me, so I can check it to make sure that it's appropriate. It also works on, you know, we're working on making sure our sentences are always well-written, with capital letters and punctuation and all those good things. But it's encouraging them to give positive comments to their fellow students. And they've actually, it's been kind of neat. It's picked up a lot recently with positive comments from the teachers as well. So let's, you know, we weren't like working to get compliments, but they are, they're really doing an awesome job. So this is our main page, and you can see some of the Leader and Me language here. And it just discusses, you know, that we're being in a positive place, and it's using some of the Leader and Me language. So they're seeing it, and then when we're ready to talk about it more, they'll be familiar. So that little video that you saw, that was just, any time that we've got cool things happening, we just make sure they're very visible. So Mrs. Pigman was making a pumpkin. She was doing a science experiment, and the pumpkin was then spilling out of its mouth. But the kids got a really big kick out of that. That was on, you know, our Halloween celebration day. So Adam is going to the shout out board. So here we go. Like I said, it jumped up a lot, and we actually, I updated. So these are all recent. And you can see there's compliments and shout outs from teachers to other teachers in classes. There's, like, if you look over on the right, Mrs. Michaelis says, "Congratulations to Mr. Capone's class." So it talks about all sorts of things that are going on around our school. And some of them, I think, like, if you look at Brady there on the top left, I love going to school so much better than being homeschooled, because you get to have more fun at school with your teachers and friends. And there's a few more. I don't know where they're located, but they just talk about, you know, League being a great place. They like being here. They like being at school. And our students who are at home are excited about things and commenting on here as well. So it is, it's a way that they can connect with each other and connect with us, just, you know, in a different way. So the form is there. They can click on the form, and then all of the former shout outs go down to the bottom, so they can still see those as well. So that's our shout out page. Outstanding students. So each month, we have October League leaders. So it's just students in each homeroom being recognized for doing exactly what we want students to be doing, being positive, being present, are present, being respectful, and participating. We also have attendance war awards. They have to spell out with letters. You can see we have our perfect attendance, our star growth students, and then also our honor roll students are all listed here. So they have that recognition. They can see whether they're at home or at school. Their parents can check it out. The public can check it out. It's all there. So that is outstanding students. School cam is just that. It's a school camera. It's pictures from all around. And I broke it down just because, you know, maybe the third floor students don't want to look at what's going on on the first floor. They want to see what they're doing, but they can't. So the top one's just in general. And then I've got different locations for the first floor, the second floor, the third floor, our virtual class, and our specials, because recently Mrs. Pigman sent pictures of cool things going on in STEM class. So I just added that in there. They were doing STEM experiments. So pretty cool. We've started to do spirit. Well, we've always had spirit days. I would be happy if every day was a spirit day. That's just me. But yesterday, we honored our veterans. So we had a red, white, and blue day. We've got pictures of the students. And one of our students actually, on the shout out board, gave a shout out to our veterans. I thought that was pretty cool. Shout out to all the veterans that went out to risk their lives. And you can see, we've done this actually dating back to Anne Bramhill. So I don't know how long we've been doing this Veterans Day project, but students are encouraged to bring in pictures of relatives that are veterans. And then we type up a little, you know, explain who they are and what branch they served in. So this is something that League's been doing for years, and we've just continued to do it. The students get to vote. This week, we had a new vote. We do it every now and then. And so you can see there's our vote from this week. We're having favorite team day today. They also, when they click on their form, can share if they have other ideas about what spirit days they'd like. Pyjama Day is always a favorite. Mr. Kreischer doesn't love it, but that's one of their favorites. So we'll probably throw that in sometime. But so tomorrow is favorite team day. And we just got in our League t-shirts, which we have a contest every year, student design. That's one of our designers, and that's our shirt for this year. So we'll have t-shirt Tuesdays. Every Tuesday, everybody wears their shirt that has a shirt, or they wear trucker clothes or blue and gold. So it's cool.
And I'll say that all of this stuff, from the kids submitting the positive comments to their voting and all of it, like teaching that online, you know, that technology aspect of things, because they don't vote for that in person in class. They don't raise their hand. They have to go onto Positive Point and then put their vote in. So.
So then the other two links we just have coming soon, which is exactly what it says. It's just things that they can look forward to or know what's going on. And then the last one, the high school did a virtual talent show last year. This year was our 10th annual talent show. Since it's, you know, a situation right now to bring an audience together, we had students submit videos or be videotaped at school. And so we did our talent show virtually. So you can check out those videos, and the students did a nice job. So that is our Positive Point.
And again, if you see, just real quick, in case you guys ever want to visit, it's really easy. You just go onto the school homepage. You go to schools and click on League. And then the second thing down there in the middle, underneath League Students, it says, "Please click here for Positive Point." Click on that, and that's how you get to everything that we just went through. It's all across that, across the top there. So. All right. Thanks, Robin.
Item number three, public participation. Each person who wishes to address the board will be asked to give his or her name and address. Remarks should be limited to three minutes in length. If after everyone who wishes to do so has had a opportunity to speak, then additional comments can be made for a total of a time of 30 minutes. Anybody wish to comment tonight?
Yes. My name is Mike Bach. I live in Four Manchester Drive. My concern is busing. Two years ago, I came here and I complained about a bus driver hauling ass down my street. I made two complaints to the Benedict School personnel. Nothing was done about it. The whole thing ended up where, the way the situation is, the bus comes down Firelands Boulevard. It stops by Manchester where I live. It turns on the Manchester, backs up, and then picks the students up on Fireland. Well, this bus driver has a record. She's not driving the bus there now. I have a new driver. I have no kids going to school whatsoever. It's just the idea that we have a new bus driver. What he does now is he drives down Manchester. The reason why he drives down Manchester is because we have new residents in that area there where they park on the street. The thing of it is, if you know these buses, the rear end of the buses is longer than the front end of the buses. There's a couple of times where, like inches away, either one of the cars that was parked there could have been sideswiped. So what he does is he goes down, rides around the cul-de-sac. And then previous to, two years ago, I found out that the reason why the bus cannot go down Manchester is because people park in the cul-de-sac. Well, I lived on Manchester for 13 years, and there's no cars parked in the cul-de-sac to dispute the reason why that bus cannot come down the street. Well, with the conditions that is, the bus driver comes down Manchester. He's not like the woman driver. He goes slow. He goes right back up to Firelands, picks the kids up, takes them to school. Then when he brings them back, he drives all the way down Manchester, goes back to Firelands, drops them off. And I talked to one of the parents, but hey, that bus can stop on Manchester and pick the kids up. There's no traffic or anything going on to dispute why that driver cannot pick them up. Why is it? You're looking at almost a football field length from the cul-de-sac to Firelands Boulevard. But these kids, for years, have been walking through all climates. Either their parent will have them sit in the car to keep warm and that. Now, if I was to go to Benedict School, I'd be telling it, well, the driver cannot be on Manchester. But the conditions of Firelands Boulevard is hard for him to back up now. But there's no problem. Well, he can go down Manchester in the first place. So he's been doing this for about two weeks now. And the one parent that I talked to, he's like everybody else, well, well, that's the way it is, so that's the way it's going to be. No. We're having more children moving onto our street. My neighbor is going to be moving out. We might have more kids on our street. And the bus make the, down the street safely, pick the kids up, bring them back, drop them off, and it'd be all right. But the thing of it is, since this has gone on for years, people's figures that somewhere in concrete, it's got to be written that way, and it shouldn't be. I look at, there might be other places than Norwalk with the same conditions, but if no one steps up and complains about it, it's going to stay that way. So the thing of it is, I want this nipped in the butt, because it's a lot quicker and easier to pick the kids up right by their house than to have the kids go clear to Firelands, stand there in the cold of the rain, and then get picked up by the bus, and then have the bus pass them by, go down Manchester, come back around, and then pick them up and take them to school. So I hope this is taken care of right away.
Anyone else? Okay. Item number four, the presentation for the online ticketing. Mr. Swatter has a presentation for us tonight.
First off, good evening to everybody. Good to see you guys. I remember the last time that, before the pandemic started, I remember watching Robin's production of Beauty and the Beast, and that was one of the last normal things we had before we got shut down. And our world's changed. We've had to make a lot of adjustments since then, and that's what we're trying to do in the athletic world. We had a great fall sports season. You know, August 1st, we had no idea what sports is going to look like. Two weeks before the sports season started up, we found a way to get our sports season in. So I'm very proud of all of our coaches, for everybody that helped us stay COVID compliant and tried to do the right thing. And we learned a lot of lessons. We did a lot of good things. And now with the winter season, we're trying to make some adjustments to make it easier for everybody, be as COVID compliant as we can with some of the restrictions that we're under. As you guys know, we've been dealing with capacity limitations. We've been dealing with only allowing so many people into our facilities. With the winter sports season coming on, it gets more difficult being indoors. And we had to pass out vouchers to all of our kids at school. Kids would come get vouchers, or for football, they would get pregame tickets. And it was a very difficult situation for us to keep track of all the vouchers and all the tickets and who's getting what, different colors that we're using for different games. So I've always been a skeptic of online ticketing. It's been around in the high school world for about four years. We used it firsthand in the playoffs this year, for the first year ever. You had to have a ticket to get into tennis and golf and some of those events that you normally don't have to have tickets. It was all done online. Soccer, football, all of our playoff games that we were involved in was 100% online ticketing. Not one time did we get a phone call. Not one time did we have anybody come in and say, "How do I do this?" They all got to the site. They all knew what they were doing, and they got their ticket. And we got to use the program a little bit with our ticket takers. And again, you know, you're dealing with some people that aren't the most tech savvy people. So, you know, you have some concerns there. No issues whatsoever. They gave us codes. The codes were valid for two tickets, or four tickets, or one ticket, depending on your capacity. You set it up however you want. They pass it out. With the online ticketing system that we're looking at, you're going to pass out one code to that kid, and that's going to be their code for the year. Go to a link on our website. You purchase the ticket, and that's it. We have a scanner, an iPad at the door. You scan it, and you automatically get their name, all their information, everything coming in the door. If somebody has an issue with the ticket, you can print it out. You can have it on your phone. You can have it in your email. If you have an issue with it, there's a way that you can go in there. You can check them in manually. And you can even help them purchase the ticket at the gate if there's ever an issue. You can purchase a ticket standing right in line right there. So I believe this is a good thing for our athletic department going forward. There is, of course, you know, some transaction fees that go along with it, which the SBC, we are not the only school that is looking at this. I know there's five other schools in the SBC that have already gone to this online ticketing. There's a couple of different ticketing providers out there that high schools are using. The one I'm looking at is pay schools. I initially went to hometown ticketing, because hometown ticketing was what we used through the playoffs. But I got some good feedback from Joyce, pay schools. They're already involved in our school with lunches and fees and all that. And I found that they were less expensive and just as easy to use. There's a local school that I contacted. Their AD that's using pay schools loves it. No hitches, very easy system to use, very user friendly. You don't have to deal with the vouchers. And all the accounting records are there, too. So for basketball games, we don't have to bring our money boxes out there, our startup money. We don't collect money. Everything is done online. In this world of, you know, cashless transactions, trying to stay away from, you know, COVID and trying to stay COVID compliant, I think this is a good option. Like I said before, I was a skeptic. I've been looking at this for a few years. Joyce came to me a couple of years ago. She said, "Hey, look at this. We'd love to see it, because all your auditing is done online. You can get the full report, and then you don't have people with their hands on cash. You don't have to deal with the cash." And for this year, what we would do is we would have, it would be 100% online. And then in future years, once we get past the COVID and everything else, we'll have cash, and then you'll also have the option to pay online. So you have a couple of different ways of doing it. So there's some talk in the SBC about what you do in transaction fees. The system that I'm looking at is for a ticket at a Norwalk game, it's $6. There's 99 cents that's added to that for the transaction fee. For the time, we're going to save, not making transaction, the money boxes and count the money and the reports. We've talked about eating that cost for the year, because we're making people go there. There's still some talk in the SBC. We're supposed to meet as a group here coming up. There's some schools that have already said that we're passing on the transaction fee to your patrons as they come. Some of them are as much as, what was it, $7.20 per ticket when we go to visiting places. So, but I think this is a great option for us to be more efficient. I think this is every treasurer's dream, where you don't have the cash out there. And I also think that this is going to make us, it's going to be a lot easier to dictate who's in and out of our facilities for the winter months. So. Mrs. Snellinger, go ahead.
Did you say that the ticket prices would not go up then?
Well, for right now, I'm looking at a couple of different options. For our, for our home, for our home single game tickets, where I'm not going to raise rate on them, because they have to go there. If other schools are going to charge us a transaction fee, then I'm going to, I'm going to charge those people coming in for visitors. So I can set it up where all of our home fans get a $6 ticket. Or to get away from transaction fees, I could do a $66 home pass for the year. And that would get you a swipe in, one swipe in for every single game. Use your little QR code. You come up to the gate, swipe in. So that would be a way to get away from the transaction fee, just $66. It's $2.50 for a pass. So that'd be $2.50 that we would eat on a pass. And that's what I would push for our home fans. But if I go to another school, and they're charging us $7.20 for a ticket, and that's what I'm trying to do, is get the league on the same page on what we're going to do with transaction fees, I'll eat the cost if I have to this year. It's just, it's a nightmare. When you have two, three, four basketball games a week, you're giving vouchers out all the time. You're giving tickets. You're, I mean, it's so difficult to keep track of everything. And to get it to parents, to give it to a kid, and the parents, we don't want the parents coming in as much as possible. So you give it to the kid. They take it home. Who knows what they get? I got phone calls all the time about, oh, I'm missing my pre-sale ticket for football, or can you give me another voucher? My student misplaced it. Again, with this online system, not one phone call. Not one phone call. I was shocked. But we did have a card. We had instructions on there. Go to this website. Click on this. Put this code in there. Very easy to use. So for, to talk about transaction fee, we would eat transaction fee for this year, because we're making everybody go there.
On the contract, you know, we had from the, from the agenda, I was looking down through it, and it said that they have a right to up for the change of fees at any point. So now we're starting off low. Is there any danger of them upping it during the season or later on?
If, I can tell you, Joyce has a very good relationship with pay schools. She recommended pay schools. I went, like I said before, I went to hometown ticketing. I don't think there's any chance that they would do that. They use this at a lot of different areas of schools. Perkins uses pay schools. Lidsworth uses pay schools. I've talked to their ADs. They've had a good relationship. They used it for the fall. Did not have one issue with it. Never said anything about raising rates. Like I said, as long as we're going through this, this is where I want people to go. But in the future, you can buy an online ticket, or you can take cash at the gate.
So what about if someone buys a ticket? Well, not buy a ticket. They don't have a phone, but they can get it on iPad. And, you know, I mean, there's some people here that don't have computers either.
Yep.
So how do they get this ticket?
So you, well.
Buy it right at the gate.
Well, the thing is, you can't buy it at the gate. But the thing is, is we are limiting to parents. 99 point, like I said, with all of our football parents got this, all of our golf parents, all of our tennis parents, all of our soccer parents, every single one of our parents that were involved in a sport got these codes. And I did not have one call. If there was ever an issue, you can get it at the gate. There's no problem, because we're going to give you that code. For a way team that's coming in, let's say that Perkins is coming to Norwalk, you'll get a code for two tickets. So you go to that website, you input that code, you get your two tickets. Let's say somebody has an issue with it. Come to the gate, okay, having an issue. Here's my code. Somebody can step through and show them how to do it. It's a pretty simple, easy system.
I guess what I meant was, right now, we're giving them to the parents. But once this whole mess is over with, and we're open up sporting that to the whole public, will there be a?
There'll be cash at the gate. You'll have the option. You can either buy a ticket pre-sale, or you can get it at the gate. So that's the thing is, right now, with, we don't want to distribute a lot of cash. We don't want a lot of people, I don't want people coming in with all these different vouchers. I mean, you should see some of our ticket takers. They've got 50 vouchers next to them, and, you know, I got to show them every single. This voucher is what we're using tonight. Other color voucher, we're using for another night. We're doing wrestling invites. Our, we're not doing big wrestling invites this year. We go to some places where there's 40 teams, and obviously, we can't do that. So we're having a few more wrestling invites here, up to five teams that are coming here. We can space them out. We can do it COVID compliant. So if I'm running a five, a five school, six school with Norwalk invite here with wrestling, I got to, I got to get six different vouchers from six different schools, and they're not all going to use the same thing. With this, I pass on to their AD, these are your codes. You got 40 tickets that you can give your. give to your parents, leave it at that. So they come in there, they scan at the gate, if anybody, like I said, we haven't had this issue, not to say that there won't be an issue. But we haven't had that issue with any of our parents up to this point with anything online. And I was, I was shocked, I was surprised, I was, I really was. I think we did a good job of explaining, we just put it on a note card, gave it to them with their code. For our codes, for our home fans, we would just give them their student ID number or what, a number that they're going to use throughout the whole year. They would use that year, that, that number for the whole year for their, for their tickets.
Do they buy like one ticket now, and then later on?
Yes.
If my wife wants to go?
Yep.
Now, is that ticket transferable? Like if I buy it and I said, "Oh gee, if I can't code..."
Yes, you can, you can give a paper copy to him, or you could email it to him. But I always tell them, you only get one swipe because our ticket reader will know, and that's what I told kids when I, when they came in, I said a few, because you could print out 30 of those and give them to anybody you want, but it's only going to read it one time. After that, it comes through, it's a duplicate ticket. It'll tell you that right when it comes in. We tried it a few times and we didn't have any issues with that.
So if I come through and my wife was still waiting on, she was late, then she'll have trouble?
There'll be two tickets.
Ultimately, okay.
There'll be two tickets. So there'll be two separate codes that you use. And again, if there's an issue, we have, everybody's, all the information's right there. Let's say we cancel a game and/or, and we gave out passes, we can give a refund back a portion of their refund. Or if we have a game and it's got to get rescheduled, all the tickets that were purchased, we can move to that next date. So, or we can give a refund back right then and there. All that information goes right back to the card that they used for that transaction. So I mean, it's, it's a pretty neat system and it's going to make the athletic department's life so much easier not to have to worry about vouchers, getting people vouchers for, I mean, it was a pain, it was a mess. Like I said, I think the fall sports season went very, very well, and, but, but that part of it was very, very difficult from trying. We would have to count out, okay, we got to give four vouchers to every kid on the soccer team, so we have to go through, rip off tickets for, four, four. Then we have to get them to a football team, they would have to come in and do pre-sale, or we'd have to do JV and freshman vouchers, so they'd give four for those. I mean, it was just tickets everywhere, vouchers everywhere. So.
Would you save money by not needing as many ticket takers then?
Well, with this year, we're only going to have one anyways because of the number of people that are coming in. So yes, it will save money. In the future, will it save money? It's, it's hard to say because we're still going to need somebody there skiing and tickets. Maybe I won't need two people at the ticket gate for football games, I'd only need one at each gate.
But that's probably going to be one.
Yep.
Only one at each door.
One at each door, yep, exactly. So I just think the, not having to deal with cash, not having to deal with vouchers, I just think it would make, make everybody, even the parents' life a lot easier. I think they would rather instead of, hey, oh, I forgot, I've had parents do that, we went to, you're in for a first football game, I gave them, they brought the JV vouchers for the next day and not the vouchers for that night. So I had the AD come over to me and he said, "Hey, do you know these people over here? They have the wrong voucher." And I went over and I, but I saw who it was, I said, "Yeah, they have a kid on the JV team, they have a kid on varsity team." So I mean, it, it, that, that aspect of all was very, very difficult and time consuming to rip tickets, give.
You're, you're talking about voucher that, that's just, that's for the athlete, even his, his family.
That just tells.
You're allowed four tickets.
Yes.
You got to worry about.
Four or two tickets, so they can go to.
I was going to say, if this is something you stay doing and it's COVID's over and you can fill the stands up, then there's no vouchers, just you just.
Just whatever.
Buy a ticket online, let's go.
Yep, exactly. So we'll have a link on our website, you click on there if you want to buy a pre-sale ticket, then you can get away from the line for the money. Some people want to pay with credit card now, they want to pay with debit card. I very rarely have cash on me, except when I'm going to high school sporting events. We're not the only ones in this area, there's, there's, I know Sandusky and Perkins and Vermillion and many more that are going to this right now. Shelby has been at hometown ticketing for past four years. They haven't pushed it, but now they are because of the times we're in and trying to relegate who's going in and who's going out, so.
Joyce has encouraged us to go with this as well for the musical.
We could use it for the musical.
Same thing, you know, I'm skeptical, we've done things.
I'll tell you, systems work well, yeah.
And it's worked well, but I mean, she's encouraged us to do this as well, so that's something that we were looking into as well.
And this is something that we could use for both of us. We can use it for concerts, let's say, you know, we want four, we've had some concerts where we want four individuals per participant. You can go on there, you can make a free event. There are no charges for free events. So parents can go on there, they can bring their QR code in there, you can scan it and they go. So. The pay schools platform that this is associated with, when Joyce became treasurer, I can't remember which year she implemented that, it was one of her first years here, it has been very well received by our parents because they can now, they can pay their school fees on there. When we had lunch charges, you know, when we, your parents could put on amounts for their kids, the parents could go in and see, you know, what their kids were spending. For the lunch and for the school fees, the parents have really, feedback has been positive. I forget how many years we've been doing it now, but the pay schools portion that this is based on has been well received. And I know when I was looking at League's website, website, when they were going through their presentation, there's a pay schools tab where you can pay for fees, and it would just be like that on our website where ticketing, pay schools ticketing, bam, click on that, go in there, buy your tickets for games.
This is a, this is a company doing this for you?
Yep.
So monthly, they send you a check or?
We can get the money, daily, monthly, whatever we want. We tell them.
And they, and they make their money doing it by?
The transaction, yes, the fee. So it's 75 cents per ticket.
I got a question as far as, you know, this is all about COVID, do we get stimulus money for doing that? Do we use the stimulus money?
I don't know that. I would have to ask Joyce that.
That's a very good idea, Steve.
I, I like that, Steve.
I hear that. People have been buying things and putting that in.
It seems like it's something that.
I mean, you're talking about the fees, I mean, we're doing this for the COVID thing, I mean.
That'd be it, I would ask.
Mm-hmm.
Good idea.
So I think, all the way around, I think it'd be nice for, you can also use it for your camps, like if you have camps, you can put camps on there, and instead of having them write checks and giving it to kids and have them bring it in there, you say, "Go to this website, sign up for the camp," right there. You do a sweat ritual.
How does that work as far as the fee, I mean?
There's still a little fee, so.
Is it just a transaction 70 cents?
It's 75 cents and then it's 2.9%. So it's like for, for a $6 ticket, it's $6.99.
Well, I'm just saying, if you do all these fees and stuff, school fees and that, so you go to lunch fees and that, what's it, I pay my, I pay my lunch on that, how's that?
There's a fee on there, I think, there is a fee.
It you, it used to be, I know when I did with campuses, then like I got, I got charged the fee because I, because I used to have to pay online.
Yes.
But for like, you know, I would quit $100 whatever, and it was, it was worth it knowing that she had it.
Yep, exactly.
Well, it's the same as a standard for, for a business, it's adding credit cards, any, any business.
Right.
You know, whether it's our Christmas tree farm or whatever other business, there's, there's a cost to using a credit card, so.
And a lot of times, you just don't even know it. You just pay it, you know, you go to Amazon, you use your card and that's it. And, you know, fees are everywhere and I just think in this day and age, like next year, I want to get through this year, this winter first, and be able to do it the best way possible, and I think this is. Next year, hopefully, we're able to open it up and people are allowed to come in, and they have two options, not just the one option. You want to pay with credit, pay with credit. I'll say there's a long line, six groups, and you say, "Hey, you can go to pay schools, somebody can go on there, skip, skip the line and go to the pass gate and come right into stadium." So you can do it right on your phone, standing right outside the stadium. So, and that's the beauty of this, if somebody is having trouble, "Hey, I got this code, I don't know how to use it." Okay, we can help them out right there, so. And you can transfer it to somebody else if they need it. Joyce, or Josh had mentioned, you know, in passing in his, in his presentation there, you know, from our exit interviews with the auditors, the main focus of, of the state auditors when they come in are cash transactions. You know, that's the highest area of fraud that, that they, they recognize. So they watch, you know, anything to do with cash transactions because that's the easiest way to have fraud. This helps, you know, limit some of that. I would think from a, from an auditor perspective, you know, they would prefer a method like this because there's less chance for any kind of fraud to occur when there's cash not being transacted, you know, handed back and forth. Which way, you know, errors too, you know, somebody counts back the wrong change or something like that. We have it every once in a while. I mean, we have, we're off $3 or $5, or I mean, it doesn't happen very often, but it happens. You know, we make mistakes sometimes and try to catch up, but, you know, I, I wish Joyce was here to kind of talk about it too, because we've had discussions about this when I, probably two years ago, we talked about this, and, and I was a huge skeptic, like I said, and this playoffs really, really, I mean, zero issue, I was, I was shocked, not one phone call. Everybody seemed to get it. As a parent, I enjoyed the lunch, being able to put lunch money on and pay school fees too. You just didn't have to write a check or do anything like that, you just logged in, paid your fees and looped on.
You had mentioned the $6.99, is the extra $0.99 going to come out of the $6?
It would come out of the $6, it would be $5.01. Yeah. What I'm going to do though is I'm going to push parents to buy passes. You buy a pass, that's going to save us transaction fees, and then they have it for the year. It's only $2.50 at one transaction versus 99 cents every time they do it. So I'm going to go to them, "Hey, do you want to buy four season passes?" I hope they do. If not, you can buy two season passes and then you can get a code for another two tickets if you're going to go sporadically to our games, so. Not all of our league games are going to be online, but, you know, we'll have to deal with vouchers a little bit there, but at least it's not, you know, three games a week or four games a week, we're dealing with all these vouchers and everybody, it's, it's, it was, it was a mess. We made it work, but it was a mess. It was not an easy thing to navigate, so.
So if they get a pass, could they still commit in different lines though?
Like, like if you had, it would be two separate passes, so like if you and your wife are going to the game, you would buy two passes and you would get a pass, your wife would get a pass, so yes, they could commit in two different lines.
So it would be like a family pass eventually?
Yes.
Maybe you have four different passes.
Yeah. Yep. And then you would say, okay, it's four swipes per game. Yep.
What's the length of the contract?
It's yearly. It's a yearly contract?
I thought it was yearly.
Because we don't have to use this. I mean, let's say that, let's say that I don't have to push them, I don't have to push our parents here, let's say after a week, like, man, this thing stinks, you know, we'll go back to vouchers and nobody will ever use it. It's just a, a one time, I think it was 249, it was $249 license fee for the year. That's how much it was, $249 license fee for the year, so. Every year. So again, if it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out, but I, but I think from everybody that I've talked to, it's been great. It's only, it's low risk, really honestly, and the system's worked, and it's going to make life a lot easier. And we can use it for musical fundraisers. I think I could put, while you're buying a ticket, I could put masks on there, T-shirts, and you could go down, and there's an option for donations if you want to donate, or, you know, there's a lot of things that you can do with it, so.
What do you think that, there's a, you must be serious.
I talked to Perkins the other day about pay schools specifically, because that's what they use. He didn't have any option, he didn't have any hassles or issues during the fall.
What are they doing as far as the fees, are they adding it on in the ticket?
They were adding it on, I do believe. I don't know for sure, I can't remember exactly, I've talked to a lot of different people, I can't remember, some people are adding it on, some people aren't. So, and it's usually a league-wide decision based off of SBC, because we set our prices for events on an SBC week. Bylaws, that's where we set our prices at, and you guys approve those, so.
So the SBC won't go back and tell us we have to add the fees on the events?
We can do whatever we want with our home fans, it's going to be the visitor plans. So, I mean, we can do whatever we want. If we want to hit that fee, we can hit that fee if we, you know, but since we're making people, like for this year, since we're making people go there, we would eat the fee, we would eat the fee for that, and it's just the ease of use and it's going to make everybody's life easier. Thank you.
Okay, we need a motion to accept the online ticketing program.
A motion to.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Anything to split? Any other discussion before we vote? Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Schnellger?
Yes.
Mrs. Wick?
Yes.
Mr. Linder?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Ritzenthaler?
Yes.
She passes 5-0. Treasurer's report.
I'm just going to unmute herself, will you? And there she is.
Hey, I'm unmuted, can you hear me?
Yep, hang on.
We're not broke yet.
Do we hear you, Joyce?
Can you hear me?
HMI carries the audio.
Is she connected through this? I have this turned down.
Okay, are you ready for me? Is that a yes? Amy, do you hear me?
See if she's, is she trying to talk?
Yeah, switching back and forth like she is.
We do have the volume all the way up here, yeah.
Okay, I don't show that I'm muted on my screen.
Are you talking to Joyce right now?
I'm just texting her so she can.
All right.
We should, we should hear her.
Can you hear me?
Speaker view.
Amy, are you there?
I know that it's working on, this is what people are seeing, so I know that they are hearing it.
So it's the, Oliver's computer here, wherever it's going with it.
Is she talking?
Can you hear me, Amy?
She's muted, she said no.
No, she's not muted.
Not muted on my side.
But she actually tried to make some, make some noise for us.
Yes. I make noise, can you hear me?
If I, if I unplug this, we won't be able to see.
I'm not sure what to try. It shows that I'm speaking on my screen.
No, so.
It sounds like it.
I can, like I said, we're not going to see her on the screen though, is what's going to happen. Viewers at home will.
I can't hear you though, Amy.
Is that okay? All right. Put my HDMI here. Okay. Now, Joyce?
Do you hear me now? Is that better? No? This worked before.
Okay, Joyce?
Yes.
Now we hear you.
Now you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Let me see, let me try one thing before we give up on our previous arrangement. Where did that thing go?
Okay, I still see you.
Which is really good. We just don't see you right now. Okay, do we still, we still hear you?
Yes. Can you hear me? Okay. We good? Are we ready to go?
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Try. I'm going to see what happens here. Okay, Mrs. DuPont?
Okay, except I see the ceiling, but that's okay. That's all right. Okay. So yes, I want, um, first off, just the thing about Josh's ticketing. That is something that we've been looking at doing, being able to offer the online ticketing for our parents and our fans. So that for one thing, they can use credit cards. That's something that with the musical, especially because it tends to be a little bit more money for some families, is the option of being able to use a credit card. So I looked at it last year, maybe it was two years ago, with Robin to start doing that. So that's really going to be a good thing, I think. And then with that, I'll go ahead and get started on my reports.
They're kind of in the middle.
Are we ready?
Just about.
It's the green one. But it, you have to use the master audio.
Okay. Oh, it's already, oh, yeah. Go ahead.
Well, while they're working on that, we'll go ahead and get started. First, we have the October 2020 financial reports. The good news for October was the school district income tax. We've recovered almost the three hundred thousand dollar loss that we were down in July. The October quarterly payment came in and we were able to receive that money back. I had, I had hoped at the time that it was just from the change in the federal tax filing deadline, when they moved that from April fifteenth to July fifteenth. And then obviously, July fifteenth wasn't included in the July payment. So that moved to the October payment. So that leaves us down just under, just over eighty thousand dollars. So that was, that was good news for October. Glad to hear that one. Then we have our minutes, the regular meeting from October twentieth of 2020 minutes. Those were attached. Next, we have our five-year forecast. And I can't quite see the screen, but I'm thinking that you have it up there. Is it correct? Yes.
We didn't, we do not see your screen, Joyce.
Not my screen, on your screen.
No.
No?
Nope, you, I, can you try sharing?
It's on the board agenda. If you want to just click on, on the agenda as one of the documents, you should be able to see it.
Okay. Hang on a second. I will share my screen and pull up the board agenda. We can do that.
Or do you need me to share my screen?
It would be ideal if you would. Can you do that?
Yeah, you've disabled me. Says host disabled participant screen sharing.
Okay. I do too. Yeah, you're right, you're right. Yep. Um, allow them to share a screen. Okay, you should be able to share your screen now, Joyce. Are you sharing your screen? There you are.
Is it up?
Yep.
Hey, you can see it? Okay, good. Do I need to make it bigger?
Little bit.
In a couple of clicks.
Yes.
Is that too big?
One more.
Can you see the whole thing?
Go back out.
Okay, all right. So, the five-year forecast. We're going to do this forecast a bit different this time. Not only with the zoom, I apologize for that, but just in general. So in the past, we focused on the individual line items. But I wanted to go more over the overall picture and how we got to where we are at now. So to start, let's remember that this is general fund only. This is our oh-oh-one operating money. Doesn't, the forecast doesn't include any grants, food service, permanent improvement, none of that. So let's start back with the state budget that funded fiscal twenty and twenty-one back in July of 2019. I was unpleasantly surprised that the budget froze our state foundation funding for schools at the previous year's level. That was not good. The state was doing well and had a huge reserve in the rainy day fund. In fiscal nineteen, we had an enrollment decrease and our economic disadvantage numbers had also decreased. So we already had a reduction in state funding from those factors. So if you look at line item one point oh-three-five, the unrestricted, unrestricted state grants and aid, that shows a change in foundation funding over years. So note also that our foundation funding is more than fifty percent of our district's funding, so it is very important. So at that time, it was not good. But we could weather the storm and hopefully the next biennial budget would be better. I was projecting deficits for fiscal twenty and twenty-one of just around half a million dollars each year. But we had the cash balance to get us through because we had some good years and we were able to build up our reserve or our rainy day fund. And our other revenue sources were doing well. Income tax was growing, property tax was stable, interest revenue was increasing. We were going to get through it as long as we were careful with spending. So you remember, that's what I said back then. Then the pandemic hit in March of 2020. Everything stopped, no one knew what to expect. And in May of 2020, the state reduced our foundation funding by four hundred forty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars, just under half a million dollars in the last two months of the fiscal year. That was just over three percent of our state aid lost. The state did this to balance their budget. The state ended the year at a positive four hundred and thirty-nine million dollars due to the seven hundred and seventy-five million dollar funding reductions to schools and half a billion of federal grant dollars the state received. And the state did not have to touch its two point seven billion dollars of rainy day money. It's worth noting, the state had projected to end the year at a positive five hundred and ninety-seven million. We, on the other hand, had to use our rainy day money, otherwise known as our cash balance, to pay the bills. Well, we had less expenses with the buildings being closed in the spring. We didn't have field trips and spring sports. We didn't have substitute costs. The water and the electric bills were much less, but we still had to pay all the employees as required by state law. And we still had to purchase and prepare food for students to pick up and find Chromebooks for students to access remote learning. And we had to pay unemployment to substitute employees. And we had to fix the water leaks and all the usual mishaps that happened in our old buildings. So we got to fiscal twenty, we ended the year at a negative six hundred ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and six dollars. And we hoped that fiscal twenty-one would be better. But then we found out our funding would be reduced again by the four hundred forty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars in fiscal twenty-one, which is this current school year. We went from frozen funding for fiscal twenty and twenty-one to losing eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and six dollars in two years. That is just under a million dollars. Okay, so we received some federal funding from the CARES Act to help with the expenses. There was a hundred and thirty-nine thousand from the Corona Relief Fund and five hundred and eighty-seven thousand from the ESRS Fund. We have used up the hundred and thirty-nine thousand of the Corona Relief Fund on subs for employees while they're in quarantine, for paying our subs that are quarantined and for purchasing supplies. The Families First Coronavirus Act, which is part of the CARES Act, says we have to pay emergency sick leave to substitute employees who qualify. The ESRS money is also paying the salaries of five remote teachers at the elementary level and we purchased two hundred thousand dollars worth of Chromebooks for our students. So that helps. But remember, we lost eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and six over two years and the federal funds were only seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, four ninety. So that still leaves us short. We also receive student wellness and success funds in the state budget, but those are restricted. Not general fund dollars, can't use them to purchase classroom supplies or pay teachers or pay the electric bill. They are what we are using for our school nurse and we are using them for two of our guidance counselor salaries to try and help the pressure on the general fund. But since the student wellness funds are restricted, there isn't much we can do that is not a new program. Also on the revenue side, property tax should remain stable. It usually doesn't change much. The income tax, we saw a huge reduction to the July payment, but it was better in October, although we are still down compared to last year. A bright spot is the workers' compensation refund, dividend, rebate, whatever the name is this time. We just received sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars this month and we're expecting to receive two hundred fifty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-six in December. That will help. It shows on line two point oh-six-oh, all other financing sources. So that is the revenue side, a recap of where we've been. On the expenditure side. Oops, lost my place. On the expenditure side, we've been doing everything we can to decrease expenditures. But the largest ones are salaries and benefits for mandated costs like open enrollment, charter school deductions, college credit plus and special education. A note on the charter schools. We have had more students enroll in virtual learning at online charter schools this year. Forty more students at a cost of six thousand and twenty dollars per student or a total of two hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred dollars. Remember, the state only funds us three thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars per student. So that means over ninety-five thousand dollars of locally raised revenue going to the charter school for those forty students. Our annual cost this year for charter schools is over seven hundred thousand dollars. Now, I did this forecast a bit different than in May. In May, I said we would not get to the point that you see in fiscal twenty-two and the following years with all the red and the deficit spending because we would have to take action before that. I said the action would be in salaries. People are what make up a school district and the only large expenditure that we can change. But it's for all of us to decide what we will do going forward, not just me. If the state does not step up and accept responsibility for funding education, we only have two choices, raise revenue ourselves or reduce expenses. In plain English, that is put a levy on or cut staff. And finally, to end this, let's have some good news. The Fair School Funding Plan, House Bill three oh-five, Senate Bill three seventy-six, was introduced last Friday and is hearing testimony now. The bill has twenty cosponsors in the thirty-three-member Senate and sixty-six in the ninety-nine-member House. This is the best hope we have going forward. The goal is passage by December thirty-first, twenty twenty. If passed, the new funding method would substantially change the makeup of the forecast as students are funded in the district in which they are educated. No more pass-through deductions for charter schools, private schools, vouchers, scholarships or open enrollment that take local tax dollars along with state funding and sends those dollars to other communities. It would also help with the over-reliance on property taxes for education funding, although it would not eliminate them. There is still a local share. But this is a chance to finally figure out what a quality education costs and hold the state responsible for funding one. Representative John Patterson will talk about the status of the school fair funding movement in a special appearance in Boardman's Schools at their Performing Arts Center Monday, November sixteenth at six P.M. The presentation is going to be livestreamed on Boardman's YouTube channel and it'll be open for questions from the audience, both in person and virtual. The event will also be recorded and you can watch it later on their YouTube channel. But I really want to encourage you to watch either the live or the recorded version. This really is the best hope, both now and in the future. So next is our resolution in support of the Fair School Funding Plan. We will send this to our representatives, Dick Stein in the House and Nate Manning in the Senate and also to Governor Dewine. Next up, we have our Title I pooling MOUs. This is pooling for equitable services at Norwalk Catholic Schools. It allows other districts to utilize our Title I teacher at Norwalk Catholic. Then we have an approval for an interim deposit. This is a new CD that we have. We have an updated job description for the treasurer's office. I revised this a little bit, certain things we don't do anymore. We don't have the E-rate and we've added some new things. Then we have power for schools. This is our energy provider for electric. This is through the three associations and the Ohio Schools Council for school districts and they negotiate lower energy rates for all schools. Then we have an FMLA for an employee. She is actually back to work, but did still need her FMLA approved. And finally, we have a donation to the robotics group from the Clear Minds Coaching and Counseling. And that is all I have.
A motion to accept treasurer's report, all items. Thank you, Mr. Moore, who has second. Thank you, Mr. Linder. Any other discussion?
Hey Joyce, what was that amount that the state ended up with? That you said?
The state, were, were they ended with their budget for the year?
Yes, please.
They were. Um, I'm almost there, hold on. Four hundred thirty-nine point seven million dollars.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, roll call, please. Uh, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Linder?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Rittenbauer?
Yes.
Miss Schnellinger?
Yes.
And Miss Wick? We want you to pass this. Number six personnel?
Joyce, you want to stop sharing your screen?
That's where I need to begin here. Hey, and our personnel items for approval. We have, the first is a leave of absence for Todd Fox as our school counselor for the purpose of serving as Dean of Students at Main Street School from October nineteenth, twenty twenty until, at which time Mr. Baumann, who is out on medical leave, returns. And the second one then is the appointment of Todd Fox as Dean of Students at Main Street School effective October nineteenth, twenty twenty, through Mr. Baumann's return from his medical leave at a daily rate of four hundred and fifteen dollars, which is taking his daily rate that he makes as a teacher and adding seventy-five dollars to it to compensate for the extra work he's doing as the principal or the Dean of Students of, of Main Street while Mr. Baumann is out. Employment Director of Support Services, Corey Schmidt, as interim Director of Support Services at Step Zero from eleven sixteen, twenty twenty until twelve thirty-one. This would allow Mr. Schmidt to work in tandem with Mrs. Ross for the next two weeks and to cover the position during the time in which Mrs. Ross is using her vacation as mother leave prior to retirement. And then when she retires officially on January first, Mr. Schmidt would then become the Director of Support Services and drop the interim title. So number four is employment of substitutes. As always, we always need bus drivers. Anyone that's out there that needs a, a job and is, is willing to drive a bus will help with the training on that. As well as anybody that wants to be a substitute teacher, substitute, really anything, we can always use help. Stipes for the study table here at Norwalk High School. And three volunteer, or three coach, volunteer coaches for swimming bowling and girls' basketball. Well, the motion to accept all items under personnel. Thank you, Mr. Linder, who has second. Thank you, Mrs. Wick. Discussion?
Yeah, I know. We, uh, last time talking about bus drivers, that is, bring up the, uh, situation with our gentleman there this evening. Let's make sure we take a look at that. You know, that's all I got on that.
I actually pulled it up on Google Maps while we were sitting here, just so I could make sure I knew where we were talking about.
And I'm going to ask for, um, Mr. Fox, phone the verbiage for me.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, roll call, please. Uh, Mr., wrong page, sorry, Mr. Moore. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Linder?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, then Mr. Rittenbauer?
Yes.
Mrs. Schnellinger?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wick?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh. Superintendent's report? Under superintendent's report, the first item is we have a partner agreement with Karen County Board of Mental Health and Addiction Services. They have been awarded a grant and they're sharing the grants with the member schools. And this MOU allows us to participate in that program in which we will receive funding to implement some prevention services. And we're developing a plan, but as we've talked about, we've just agreed to contract with North Point for a social worker using titles, funds and success and wellness, student success and wellness funds. So that position will be funded both through, well, basically federal funds, state and federal funds, not through the general fund. So this MOU, that social worker will help us work the prevention services that we will be able to use that money for. Number two is a job description for our esports club advisor. And if you remember, esports is a club that we started last year as a trial. It's been hugely popular. We even had a student that earned a scholarship last year to go to Tiffin based on their time working with the esports club. So it's something that has really taken off. You know, it's taken off, you know, nationwide, globally. It is the new thing. So then number three goes with the job description then, which would be adding esports to our supplementary, supplementary salary schedule. And esports would be on the same level as nerd. And esports would be on the same level as nerd nation. And those are all of the ID, are the items for approval.
Motion to accept items 1, 2, 3, and superintendent's report?
Hello.
Thank you, Mrs. Wick, do we have second? Thank you, Mrs. Snellinger. Any discussion? Hey, roll call, please.
Uh, Mrs. Wick?
Yes.
Mrs. Snellinger?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Linder?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yep.
And Mr. Ritson-Powler?
Yes.
Motion carries popular. Okay, items for information, EMOV news.
Okay, EMOV news, I can tell you a little bit. I know they have the new, the new point, I don't know, that's the fact being the ionization. At 80%, I've been done, by the end of the year, it'll be 800%. It's that new circulation to help with filtration.
Spoke it.
Oh, yeah, where they after all this. And just to let everybody, the parents know, and students know that postcards and whatnot will be coming out by next month for registration starting first year.
Legislative report?
Nothing beyond what Joyce mentioned about the Captain Patterson funding model.
Okay. All right, anything else before we adjourned, anything, is there anything to bring up?
I, if I could, I'd like to tell a story. It was, a half parent, my father talked to me last night. And I'll get through this without crying, because I've talked to a couple of people and I cried about it. Everybody knows how I feel about these masks, everybody knows how I feel about a lot of things because I'm pretty vocal about it. He talked to me, she doesn't go to our district, but she's a fifth grader. He has taken her out to the reservoir, tries to take her out to eat, to the stores, whatever. She is petrified, she's afraid to touch anything, she won't go anywhere. Even at the reservoir, people walking towards her, she walks in the opposite direction. She's outside with her mask on all the time, constantly asking for her hand sanitizer. This is the part that frustrates me, that I'm upset about the masks with our kids is because, and I know that, you know, super tense, you guys have no control over it, I understand that. But the mental part of it, he said, what can I do to help her not be so afraid? And that's the part that I'm trying to explain to people. It's, it's, you know, they might not see some things now, but it's going to hurt 10, 15 years from now. The psychological that it's doing to them, that this child that used to be so bubbly, so outgoing, then is petrified. And I just, I, I don't know if there's more stories out there or if there are. I wish that people would speak up and contact the representatives and congressmen to let them know what this is doing, because it's not good. That's all I want to say.
Anyone else have anything to bring up?
Heard about a positive feedback for the new elementary building. Light moments out there.
Eva, it's just an update there. Mr. Reed has worked with an architecture firm, they're coming in November 25th.
Technically scheduled for November 25th to come in and update our glass facility plan. The last one was done in 2007, so they actually have that as a baseline. So they'll work off of that template and just update the parts that need to be updated. So that saved us a little bit of money, what we talked about during the free agenda meeting. So the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, if all goes well, they'll be in the district taking a look at five out of our six buildings to see where we stand on that state percentage.
Step number one. Very exciting process, where's Reed going with that? Yeah, Mrs., we talked to Kelly Ross to make sure she'd be here that day, she'll be here. The biggest thing they need are, they need some guidance as to the things we've repaired and fixed since 2007. And that's definitely information in history that Kelly can give them, because she's been, she was either the, she was the assistant very that time to Dustin, and then she's been director herself the last few years. So this information she definitely has and she can share with them.
Board members invited, of course.
I'm sorry.
Board members invited, uh?
If you wanted to tag along?
Yeah.
Yeah, Ken will be in session that day.
They won't really give you like insight into the new building, basically like George said, they'll, they'll take a look at what would it cost to bring our existing facilities up to OFCC standards? And they look at the big components, the HVAC, the technology, the roads, the parking lots, things like that. And then after that, they just look at, okay, you'd have to spend this much here, this much here, this much here, and that, that's where that percentage comes from.
So it's over 67%. 57 are older.
Yeah. Then that's, that's the recommended percentage for repair versus replace.
And they will share those reports with you so you can see where we're at.
Anything else? Okay, motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mrs. Wick, thank you, Mrs. Snellinger.
Mrs. Snellinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Wick?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Linder?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yep.
Mr. Ritson-Powler?
Yes.
We're adjourned.
Thank you, I forget to page this night one through the day.